I'll open the City Commission meeting for Thursday, September 5th at the Langston Center. And the first will be the invocation by Minister Ethan Magnus from First Christian Church. You will stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Let's pray again. Gracious God, we come to you in need of your sovereign love. For your power exceeds all human power. Your authority exceeds all human authority and your government will stand when all human governments have passed into history. We come to you in confession of our weakness and sin. For we have sought too often our own power, fought too selfishly for our own glory. We come to you seeking strength that we would turn to your wisdom instead of our own. That we would turn to honesty instead of falsehood. That we would turn to humility instead of pride and self-seeking. And we come to you for a blessing. Like Jacob, we cling to you and will not let go, God, until you have blessed us. For you are good and gracious and loving. And in you we put our trust. God bless our leaders with wisdom and grace. Bless them with sharp minds and soft hearts. Bless them with a love that sees beyond self to the community they have pledged to serve. We thank you for their service and ask that your blessing will be with them tonight and always. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let the leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, your first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting held on Thursday, August 15th, 2024.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Mayor, we have no one signed up for public comment on the agenda. The next item of business is Proclaimations, Resolutions, and Presentations. The first proclamation is for Flora Joy, for her Hopes and Dreams Quilt. It is on display at the Langston Center Administration. You have a picture of it to the side over here. And I think that Commissioner Brock is going to speak to this one.
Yes. Mayor, first of all, thank you for letting me make this presentation to Dr. Joy. I've known her for quite a while. She and I were both young faculty members out at East Tennessee State University in the College of Education in the early 80s. I remember her walking through the building and there was always this sense or aura of energy and creativity around her. And it's certainly a privilege now, so many years later, to be able to recognize what she has done with that. She's a prolific author, has written many books, and in fact, we will be installing a storybook trail on the Tweatsy Trail, somewhere out, I think around the quarry, of one of her books. And so children will be able to get on the trail, walk the trail, and to be able to read the book that she has written. She also is a very creative person and has worked. If you look at this quilt over here to your right or left, this is a fabric quilt. It has 533 photographs that she transferred the photographs to fabric and then hand-stitched them together in this quilt. She has named it Hopes and Dreams Quilt, and it's on display. And they donated it to the Langston Center. And it's on display downstairs in the main corridor. So her quilt was really to highlight the people who have done so much work in the civil rights area and to use the coloration in the quilt to show the unity that all races can have together to make things better. So we want to thank Dr. Joy and her husband, Henry, as well, who are an amazing couple in this area. So please make sure you go down and see the quilt and look at the photograph. There's an index down there, too, that will show the location of the pictures and tell you who that is a picture of. So you will recognize many that she highlights as being significant in the area of civil rights. So we want to thank her for donating it to the Langston Center. And we will keep a good eye over it and make sure that our young people particularly can appreciate it. So thank you, Dr. Joy.
The next presentation of proclamation is recognizing September 19th, 2024, as Find the Good Day. And we will have the mayor come down. And I think we have Caitlin Yarborough here to accept this and other board members.
Now it is. Very good. Very loud. All right. Why don't you come stand by me? So let me read this for you. Whereas the Junior League of Johnson City is dedicated to promoting volunteerism, empowering women, and enhancing communities through effective leadership and action. And whereas Find the Good Day, observed on September 19th, 2024, encourages individuals to recognize and celebrate the positive aspects of their communities and to take action to uplift others. And whereas on this day, we acknowledge the importance of kindness, compassion, and community service in fostering positive change and building stronger, more resilient communities. And whereas the Junior League of Johnson City continues to play a pivotal role in advocating for significant community initiatives and empowering individuals to make a lasting impact. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2024, as Find the Good Day in Johnson City, Tennessee, and encourage all citizens to participate in acts of kindness, volunteerism, and community service. Thank you very much. I'll give this to you, and I'll let you tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you so much. So I'll introduce myself. I'm Caitlin Yarborough. I am the Junior League of Johnson City's 2024-2025 Community Impact Director. This is our president, Jamie Fink, and our nominating and placement director, Katie Sellers. And I did prepare a little something. Thank you. On behalf of the Junior League of Johnson City, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Fowler, for this proclamation. We're honored to accept. Every third Thursday in September is Find the Good Day. It's an international day dedicated to uncovering the positivity in not just ourselves, but also in our community. In a world craving optimism and resilience, this day reminds us of the power of positivity. We encourage our fellow citizens to join us by shifting our focus to the good. Together, we can amplify our impact and foster a stronger and more united community. The Junior League of Johnson City has made many lasting impacts in our community for the last 77 years, such as the Hands-on Museum, all the way to the improvements at the Johnson City Public Library. We are committed to partnering with organizations that do the work and provide resources to help care for our community members, especially our women and children. Organizations like Ronald McDonald House, technology, just kidding. Ronald McDonald House, The Safe House, The Children's Advocacy Center, Second Harvest Food Bank, and Girls on the Run are just a few of the organizations that we do partner with. We're celebrating Find the Good Day 2024 by shining a light on a past signature project, the Caring Cabinets Network. It was an initiative that was a collaboration with the Girl Scouts of Southern Appalachia back in 2020. Its purpose was to provide an unspoken and unmet need. Unmet need. According to the last census, 20% of our neighbors are living below the poverty line and 43% are struggling to make ends meet. While we know that we aren't providing a solution to the problem, we can at least provide access to household items that folks truly need. But sometimes they can't afford them. Prices are still high, and so we're encouraging our membership, as well as our fellow community members, to collect household cleaning and personal hygiene items, including children's items. There's a collection box inside Joe Scotto's Downtown, which we're very thankful to them for. We plan to restock the cabinets right after Find the Good Day on September 19th. And you can find more information about that on our website. But I do want to thank you again and the rest of the Johnson City Commission for your dedicated service to our community. And we're so excited to have all of Johnson City join us in observing Find the Good Day. We also want to remind everyone that we will be at the Blossom and Thrive Festival this Saturday in King Commons from 10:00 to 4:00, recruiting for new members. And we will also have our annual Touch a Truck event at our new location at the Model Mill Downtown. And that is on September 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we do have a sensory hour from 2:00 to 3:00. But you can find more information about that at the juniorleagueofjc.org. Thank you.
Mayor, the next proclamation is recognizing the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Johnson City.
Yes, I am Heatherle Sifford. I am the regional chair for the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network here in our area.
Thanks for being here. And I will read this for you. Whereas suicide is a tremendous form of suffering and one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than 1,200 lives lost in Tennessee each year and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is key to preventing further suffering and loss of life and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment. And whereas suicide prevention has been made a state priority by the governor and legislature, an implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention is underway in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state by implementing our state plan. And whereas everyone can play a role in suicide prevention by learning and sharing the risks and warning signs, decreasing stigma, sharing available resources, and promoting help-seeking by talking about suicide using safe messaging. And whereas the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you and your loved ones, and best practices for professionals in the United States. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim September 2024 Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Johnson City and encourage citizens to take the time to inquire about the well-being of their family and friends and to genuinely convey their appreciation for the existence of any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or a hug may go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Thank you.
I would just like to thank you, Mayor Fowler, and all of the commission. Your continued support over the years is just overwhelming, and we appreciate your attention to this. And we thank you for this proclamation. Thank you so much.
Mayor, the next proclamation is a presentation of proclamation recognizing September as National Senior Center Month. We have Deb Fogel, as well as our senior center staff here, and it's so great to see them. And I love the shirts. So thank you all for being here and thank you for being great city employees.
Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas the Johnson City Senior Center, the first accredited senior center in the state of Tennessee, has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Johnson City, Tennessee. And whereas through their wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Johnson City, Tennessee to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas the Johnson City Senior Center has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people aged 50 and older, many with underlying medical conditions, are cared for and able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas the 102 senior centers in Tennessee affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, do hereby proclaim the month of September 24 as National Senior Center Month and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to take issue with 50 and over being... It's a very broad net you cast.
That's okay. We're excited to be able to celebrate this month as National Senior Center Month. And we have over 4,000 members that are seniors, 50-plus at our center. And we've got lots of things happening at the center. We have 195 participants in our Senior Olympics program. That's for this region, this area of First Tennessee. And so we're excited to get that. We kicked it off yesterday at our golf course. And so we're excited to have that through all the month of September. Plus, we're going to do some celebrating. We're going to celebrate next Monday with a Big Ten outside and hot dogs, chips, music, games. And then we're going to celebrate our music groups on the next day. We've just got lots of things we're going to celebrate and participate for National Senior Month. So we're excited to do that. And we think we're about one of the best senior centers, not only in this region, but I think in the nation. Many, many times, we have people coming in, even from Atlanta, saying, "We don't have anything like this." So it's these folks that are standing right next to me that make that all possible. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves and then tell them what they do in the center.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chad Barnes. I do the pickleball operations, as well as the Senior Olympics that she just mentioned, and senior softball.
I'm Janie Clark, and I'm a registered nurse that works 20 hours at the senior center each week, planning health-related programs, health screenings, health fairs, and overall trying to keep our seniors healthy and active.
Good evening. I'm Donna Campbell. I'm the office manager for the senior center. And I also plan charter trips and day trips on the senior center buses.
My name is Michelle Jenkins. I'm a program coordinator. I do the hiking and walking programs, a lot of the indoor sports, the senior dance programs, the senior basketball as well.
I'm David Montgomery. I'm the senior account clerk, so I'm sort of behind the scenes. But I take care of everything financial, process all the grant reports, help with the front desk reservations, and assist the seniors in getting their insurances approved for free fitness rooms.
I'm Mrs. Nelson. I'm the in-home service coordinator. I go into the homes of the aging of disabilities here in the Johnson City area to help get them with services they may need to live independently at home, which is Meals on Wheels. Our newest program is AD Rest Fit Program for the seniors that's suffering from Alzheimer's and dementia to give those families a break.
My name is Jessica Thomas. I'm the Lifelong Learning Program Coordinator and also in charge of the evenings.
And I'm Cheryl McGluckman, and I'm in charge of arts and crafts programs. And I'm also the volunteer coordinator at the center.
So you can see we offer a whole lot of things at the center. I still have more. Just wait. But we offer so many things in the center. And but Mayor Fowler, we, and Vice Mayor Murphy, Commissioner Wise, Commissioner Brock, Commissioner Hunter, our city manager, Kathy Baum, our assistant city managers, Steve Willis, Randy Trivitt, and Joy Baker, and also our Parks and Rec director. Thank you for all your support that you give to the senior centers and to the seniors. And we know you go all out for seniors. Yes. So we have for you... Yay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of y'all and thanks for everything that y'all do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Wise, I'm kind of jealous of all the things you have access to.
I do want to confess that I joined AARP. I take a special privilege or delight in invoking the discount in the presence of my teenage children. They're mortified.
I'm waiting for the super senior category to come about. Debbie, before y'all leave, there is something I want to say about our senior center and the Memorial Park Community Center. You know, before I got on the commission in 2013, there was a commission who had a vision and saw the opportunity to create a multi-generational facility. Some liked it, some didn't like it. But what we've heard tonight and what we've seen, and anytime any of us go over into MPCC, it's packed, it's full. And I think, Debbie, to your point about when people say, "Well, gosh, how do you do this? We don't have anything like this." I think just the energy that is fed through that center, no matter what your age is, just empowers the next one to do more and more and more. And so I want to thank that commission because sometimes we forget them, you know, out of sight, out of mind. But they took a chance and they invested in MPCC. And it is just a great community center, and I just want to thank them all. Yeah.
As senior members, my family, the benefit of programming, it has been noticed. And the going above and beyond is noticed. And thank you for all that you do.
I think that's actually go all out.
It is. It is.
If I were on brand, I would have been more precise in my words. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda.
I'll start with Commissioner Wise. Anything?
I don't have anything.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
I'd like to pull 6.4.1. That's Mr. Witherspoon. Anytime we're doing improvements to our water system, I think it's great for the public to know about it. And you can give us a little just update about that project.
No, sir.
Thank you. And I think we have our director, Tom Witherspoon, here to speak on this item.
Commission for a number of years has funded annual replacement. And these are primarily replacements of smaller lines in neighborhoods and upgrading of those lines. Typically, they're galvanized or small diameter cast. We go back in and enlarge the line, put fire hydrants in in a number of areas. So there are three areas that are noted here. Oak Grove Road, Brandon Drive, Baywood Drive, Rainwood Road. And so this is a contract with what is the firm that's now acquired, TH&amp;P, Thompson and Lyttle, to perform the design services for those. And we'll be bidding those projects over the next two years.
This is an ongoing thing to replace the galvanized pipe in the city.
That's right. We usually budget about a million to a million and a half per year in order to do that. And that's cash funded.
When we make those improvements on our side of the meter, do we encourage the people in the households to take a look at theirs and perhaps replace the galvanized pipe?
They do. A lot of it depends on how much pressure and how much flow that they've got once we replace our portion of the system. And a lot of times, they will go ahead and replace theirs also.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Move approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioners, the next order of business is consideration of ordinances under first reading. The first item is 7.1. This is ordinance number 4894-24. And this is, again, the first reading. It's an ordinance approving, providing for the conveyance of a certain parcel of real property owned by the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, located in the 9th Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, to Yadu Management LLC upon the terms and conditions contained herein and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. And we have our deputy city manager, Mr. Trivitt.
Good evening, commissioners, mayor, and city manager. As she said, I'm Randy Trivitt, the deputy city manager for the City of Johnson City. This is the property under this ordinance that last month that you all declared as surplus. This is a small part of property. It's about 1,395 square feet, adjacent to the Red Mez Restaurant downtown on Buffalo Street. The reason that we presented this to you is a number of years ago, the city entered into a permissive use agreement with Red Mez so that they could build an outdoor dining facility, an outdoor seating space. They took that space and built a really nice... I don't know if you've been down there, but it's a very, very nice outdoor seating. With that permissive use agreement, they were to pay rent payments to the city. Then they approached the city to ask if they could purchase that small piece of property where this facility is built on, which we felt like was a better idea to put it back into the property that they already own adjacent to it, so it goes back on the tax rolls. So we presented this to you last month to declare this surplus. So tonight and for the next two readings, if you so approve, this will be requesting to sell that property to them for the price that's listed in the ordinance of $8,551.35.
If we didn't sell it to the adjacent property owner, how could the property be used if conveyed to someone else?
It could not be. It would be too small for them to do anything with. And so if someone else were to purchase the property, they would end up trying to enter into a lease agreement with the adjacent property. Part of this deal is for the adjacent property owner, if they purchase this and this goes through, is to combine it with their property, which in downtown, as you know, there's zero setbacks. So the structure that they build on this property is attached to their building. So it goes... Their building is right to the property line. So it would be very difficult and inconvenient. These are intermingled together so much that our senior staff attorney did the research to make sure that we could sell this property directly to the property owner that's adjacent to it.
It's been really a nice improvement in that area as well in terms of curb appeal, for sure. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to, I guess, reiterate the point. I think sometimes when we convey property, people envision that conveyance with more variables. And we basically have two choices. We can continue to own that property and generate no tax revenue, give a permissive use agreement, or we can convey it to the adjacent property owner, increase the value of their parcel and therefore their tax bill. And so two choices. One of them generates more revenue. It's all very, very much above board and clear cut.
Any further? Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioners, the next three items are all one piece of project, or one project. And so our planner will present one time. You'll need to take three separate votes. And so I'll read on each of those. But then they're all considered under the same project. So the first item is 7.2. This is ordinance 4897-24. It's an ordinance assigning Planned Residential 2 to approximately 7.07 acres located along Gray Station Road. The next item that you will be voting on is item 7.3, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee by changing from B5 to RP2 for property located at Zero Gray Station Road. And then finally, item 7- And then finally, item seven point four. This is the annexation of that property that is outside the city boundary. It's an owner consent annexation of the devolved property on Gray Station Road is to consider the approval of a preliminary resolution calling for the, the public hearing on the proposed voluntary annexation of approximately seven point zero seven acres along Gray Station Road.
Good evening, Mayor Fowler, Vice Mayor Murphy, and commissioners. I'm Riley Putney, and I'm the Development Coordinator with Planning and Development Services, and I will start our presentation. I divvied it up three into the three separate items, so it'll be easier to follow, but I can present them all at once instead of three separate items. The first one I will discuss is the, the annexation request for the primary resolution of seven point zero seven acres located on Gray Station Road. And I know we love the timeline and the stars, so I, we brought it back. So, we are at the September fifth meeting where we are calling for the preliminary resolution to be approved, which basically sets the public hearing and the first reading of the zoning assignment of RP two. To orient the commission of where the property is located, in the bottom right, the yellow star, it is near the Gray Station Fire Department, and we took some road view pictures of the property, kind of looking up into the, to the hill and an aerial view of what we are considering for annexation, and the annexation portion is where my mouse is highlighted right here. The request is to annex the seven point zero seven acres on Gray Station, which is contiguous to the city, and it is shown in the red hash mark here. The property that's contiguous is currently zoned B five in the city limits. It currently has a zoning of A one in Washington County, which is general agriculture. The A one zoning district allows for residential development currently, so the request to annex and then furthermore develop in the residential development of RP two is in line with what is existing in the neighborhoods. The plan of services was completed, and all agencies have provided that plan of service, which was provided in your packet. There was no concerns over any of the costs or infrastructure. Water sewer is available. Sewer will be made available in full extent in the summer of 2026, and the developer is aware, and they believe that they will be kind of ready to connect and build out by the end of the, that time period. So, for the annexation primary resolution, staff would recommend, and I, when you make your recommendations, I can go back to these slides separately, so we have them in, in, in front of you, but staff would recommend the approval of the plan of services and primary resolution for the annexation due to it being contiguous to the city limits and within our urban growth boundary.
This will be where you can decide. This is the item seven point two, which you, you would now...
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item, same parcel of land that we just discussed, is, is assigning the zoning assignment for, of RP two for the annexed property. And I know this looks very colorful in front of you, and I worked very hard to get an overlay of both Washington County and our zoning and land use to exhibit, to show that RP two matches the existing corridor. So, the RP two district requires a minimum size of four thousand square foot lots. The density is three point four dwelling units per acre. So, with this development, in conjunction with the parcel that's already in the city, would equate to thirty-three units for the development, and sidewalks would be required as well as open space. And at the time of rezoning, which is the next topic, would, the concept plan would become binding. And you can see, just, I wanted to point out here, that along Gray Station Road, there is a very residential corridor, so this development is less intense than what is existing there now and lines up with both Washington County and our city zoning. The concept plan, while at this stage is not required, but the next portion it is, you'll be, you'll see it on the next slide as well, shows those thirty units, so they're actually less dense than what is required. They're three units below the maximum density, all on a single lot, so it's a planned unit development where it's common area, and they will be buffering along the existing single-family homes, so there's some space and distance between the, the development and the existing homes with green space and cul-de-sacs and street systems that meet our local regulations.
Is the, is the buffering required, or?
Yes, the buffering is required in, in this case.
And these are patio homes that are appropriately sized for a four thousand square foot lot.
Correct. However, there, there won't be four thousand square foot lots. There's no individual lots. It's all just a planned unit development.
Gotcha, okay.
So, for the zoning assignment, staff would recommend approval of the RP two zoning district due to its being in line with the existing residential developments in the area.
I would move approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
And so, the last item is the rezoning of the property that is adjacent, that is in conjunction with this annexation, that is currently zoned Johnson City B five, which is planned, excuse me, it's commercial, and planned community business. So, in order for it to be developed along with the annexation, we're asking for it to be zoned RP two as well. Similar pictures, you, the, the red outline is the actual parcel that is located within the city and would be rezoned RP two, and has a slight slope of twenty feet. And these are existing maps that you've seen, just to jog your memory of land use, future land use, and what is actually there and how it matches up with the development. And at this point, the concept plan is binding for the rezoning for the development, so kind of already went over it in the previous half, so if you have any further questions on the concept plan, I would be happy to answer them.
So, it's only non-binding for about twenty seconds between the votes, basically?
Essentially, yes.
So, they don't have time to do anything hasty?
Once the rezoning goes through the third reading and is approved, the, the concept plan is binding, and then any changes would have to go back through planning commission and subsequently city commission.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, the next item for consideration is under second reading. It's ordinance forty-eight ninety-five dash twenty-four. This is the second reading and public hearing. It's an ordinance providing for the conveyance of certain parcel of real property owned by the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, located in the Tenth Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, to Washington County Johnson City Animal Control Center, Inc., upon the terms and conditions contained herein and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Good evening again, commissioners, and mayor, and city manager Baugh. My name's Randy Trivitt. I'm the deputy city manager. This is the property that came to you last month for first reading. It is a property that was originally purchased by the Animal Shelter Board, the Animal Welfare Board, and they conveyed it to the City of Johnson City in November of 2015 for a specific purpose and use that the city had interest in, but that did not come to fruition, and then there were some MTA studies that come in and said that prop, that use would not be very appropriate for that property. So, the Animal Welfare Board asked if we would convey that back to them, and so that's what this ordinance is doing, and then there's, and it's with a public hearing as well, but there's nothing changed on the request from first reading.
Did we, did we pay anything in consideration for the property to begin with?
We did not pay anything. It was, it was conveyed to the city at no charge, and so conveying it back...
So, this just puts us back where we were.
Correct.
All right, since the public hearing, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I will disclose I serve on the Animal Control Board, but I have no personal interest in this.
Good. Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
The next order of business is item eight point two. This is ordinance forty-eight ninety-six dash twenty-four, and this is the second reading. It's to, it's the, the FY 2024 supplemental budget ordinance. It's an ordinance appropriating additional funds to the various departments and divisions of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, with additional revenue from local, state, and federal sources. And I don't think there's been any changes, but you may wanna update people on what this actually does.
Sure, there have no, there have not been any changes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Lous, Ms. Ball, good evening. I'm Dustin Thompson, the budget director with the city. The supplemental budget, this is basically a cleanup budget for FY 24, and it just recognizes additional revenues and expenses throughout the year and formalizes them through this process. There have been no changes, so I would recommend approval on second reading.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and two seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioners, you have two, two items under third reading. These are items nine point one and nine point two. The first item is nine point one, ordinance forty-eight, forty-eight ni, forty-eight ninety dash twenty-four. This is the third and final reading. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, by changing from R five district to B four district for the property located at zero Mockingbird Lane.
Thank you, Manager Baugh. Good evening, mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Bryce McNamara. I am a planner with Development Services Department. This is the final reading. We have had no changes to this request.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner, the last order of business is item nine point two, which is ordinance forty-eight ninety-one dash twenty-four. This is the third and final reading. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, by changing from R O one to B four for property located at twenty-seven twenty-one East Oakland Avenue.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Callie McGrew. I'm with Planning and Development Services. There have been no changes in regards to this project.
Move approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
If, nothing else from the city managers or from administration, thank you.
I'll start on my end again. Commissioner Wise, anything else this evening?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor.
I would just like, you know, we've, we've approved a lot of investment that's coming to our city here in these last few months, and I guess just a, a word of thanks to the businesses and for the people who are moving here to see Johnson City as a great place to come to, and so it's, it's wonderful to see kind of the organic growth that's going on in our city, which, you know, helps us actually keep taxes low because we are growing. It's a good thing. I wanna, appreciate that.
Commissioner Hunter?
I would just remind everybody, school's back in session, and there's a lot of road improvements in high-traffic areas, so pay attention and be safe.
And one other thing, again, Johnson City got recognition in USA Today, Moving to the South. Here are the five best cities according to our 2024 study, and number one, Johnson City, Tennessee. So, we, we live in a great place. People are figuring that out. I'm not sure we're gonna be able to keep up if we keep getting these kind of articles, but we will try and keep our infrastructure going so we can handle the people that are wanting to move here because it's a great place to live. So, thank you, everybody, and I will close the meeting.